Possession, roll call please.
Mr. Sarver.
Here.
Mrs. Alcorn.
Yes.
Dr. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Murbaugh.
Here.
Mrs. Taliani.
Here.
Mr. Ferrari.
Mr. Sparks.
Here. If you please stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. Before we get started, first up, we have one set of minutes from the December regular meeting. So when ready, we need a motion, of course, to approve those as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn. Mr. Murbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Sarver.
Yes.
Dr. Lynch.
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes. Okay, under recognition, we have a couple people to recognize tonight. And we'll start off with a staff member here, Mrs. Kathy Baker, who is a step program job coach. And our administrator, Eric Udis, suggested Kathy put her name in to recognize her as a person who goes above and beyond the call of duty of what's in her job description and kind of just does things that it sounds like behind the scenes, little things that may come up along the way. If for some reason we have snow over the weekend or overnight, she will be one that goes out and cleans up, cleans out the cars for the staff the next day. Also very involved with, it sounds like, the CAFS closet, which is a fairly new thing we have here at the school, which is very nice. And she kind of takes charge and helps keep order of inventory and does those types of little things. So I guess just a couple examples of an employee that does that extra step, an extra thing that makes everyone's life a little easier and kind of flies under the radar. So we really appreciate hearing those kinds of stories and we really appreciate as a district and as a board to have employees like yourself. So we thank you for all you do and we really appreciate it. So keep up the good work. Also, we want to recognize Coach Mark Habicorne. Couple of months ago, we had Habs here for celebrating his thousandth victory and we have him back again tonight as he was named the 2021-2022 National Federation of State High School Association's Girls Volleyball Coach of the Year. So again, a great honor, Coach. You know, your program and the volleyball program speaks for itself, very, very successful, well-established, so keep it going. And again, congratulations on that honor. So we have certificates for both of us. So Kathy and Coach, I'm going to come on up to meet the board and give your certificate. Kathy Baker.
Start Rosie.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job, Coach.
Oh, thank you so much. Congratulations, Kathy.
Congrats, Al.
Congratulations. Okay.
Yep. We got pictures.
We're still working through the setup here now.
One of the hard day.
So crazy.
Sorry, sir?
Normal. I saw you sent me an email after five o'clock, but I didn't have the chance to open it yet.
Yeah. Something to learn about our week today, about the backup checks while it goes live.
Yeah, yeah. They'll call you on it in the morning.
Yeah, sounds good.
But, yeah, far worse laws then, but, you know.
You said what? Oh, really?
I get it, but I've had people find things over time, you know?
Okay. Okay, moving on, now we have some division spotlight tonight. We're going to hear from the English department headed up by Michelle Haniker-Ummel.
Left and right, yeah, hit the circle, circle right, circle left, we'll bring you back.
Thank you for spotlighting the English Division tonight. I am Michelle Haniker-Ummel, English Division Chair, and I'm also one of the two AP English teachers. This year, I have the pleasure of teaching three junior sections of AP English Language and Composition, and then I have two senior AP English Literature and Composition classes. So this is the first year where I am all AP, all five classes. And tonight, I'm talking to you about how the College Board prepares teachers and students for advanced placement courses. And usually you hear about the College Board preparing students, but really what it comes down to is preparing teachers, because you have to prepare the teachers in order to prepare the students. So over the last decade, I'd say, I can't even say how long I've been in AP, but they've done a lot to prepare not just the students, but the teachers as well. So first, just some background, just a little history lesson on what AP is. It stands for Advanced Placement. And it is sponsored by the College Board, who has been around for a while, for, I think, since about 1900. And their job is to match high school students with college courses and they also oversee student achievement and what the equivalent of a college class is. You'll also hear the name College Board when you hear about the ACT and the SAT. So if students take an AP class, they're actually also preparing for SAT. It's kind of a hidden agenda there, but we do both. In 2022, four and a half million exams were taken by about two and a half million students from over 22,000 high schools. But that many students, they weren't always taking that many exams. In May of 2022, LP students took nearly 300 AP exams. And some students take as many as five in one year. And when you're looking at a two-week window, that's a lot of tests. That's a lot of stress, too. But it's about a little over 100 students who actually rise to that challenge and take these rigorous classes. So I'm going to choose the 90s, just because that's when I arrived at LP. So 25 years ago, how many classes do you think were offered at LP? Zero? Anyone else? You have the cheat sheet. Oh, you're looking ahead. That's a good cast, that's a good cast. So there were actually two. I wasn't teaching AP English Literature when I came in 1996, but there were only two. And not many students taking the test. I don't have records to go that far back, but I do remember that there were so few students taking the AP English Lit and Comp exam that the school paid for the exam. And it was about $60, so it's about half the cost, but now students pay for it. So that was 25 years ago. And now, I won't even ask you the question because you're cheating. And now there are 16 courses offered. And we keep adding. I think AP Spanish Language is the latest one that will run next year. And Dr. Robleski certainly had a hand in changing the curriculum and getting us on the AP train, because it wasn't, it's not an easy thing to teach. It's very rewarding, though, so 16 classes. And I know Mr. Gibson is going to share some other statistics about the courses, the statistics from this year for 2023. So just to show you the rigor of an exam, the exam that the seniors take on Literature and Composition is a total of three hours. And this is in May, when seniors are very much already gone. So it's an hour long of reading five passages, and in literature, it's imaginative literature. So it's poetry, a lot of poetry, fiction, there are plays, there are short excerpts of novels and short stories. So five passages of multiple choice, that's an hour. They take a break, they come back, and they get two hours to write three essays. And each essay is about 40 questions. So the first one, they get a poem they've never read, they analyze it. The next one is an excerpt from a novel, they analyze that. And then the last one is called "The Open- ended Question," where they're given a question and then they choose a work of literary merit, the College Board says. So they pick a play or they pick a novel, and the topics range from a character who had to go against a hierarchy or exile, sacrifice. So we read a lot in AP Lit. I don't think any are over three hours and 15 minutes, but I could be wrong. There might be one that's longer. So how does the College Board help to prepare teachers to teach these skills? This actually came out in 2019, and I have one of the binders, I can pass it around. But this is the English Language and Composition Course and Exam Description. Believe it or not, we didn't have these teachers until 2019. And everybody knows what happened at the end of the 2019-2020 school year. So it was very timely. And in addition to workshops and mentoring and having access to past exams, the College Board has made sure that teachers have these items. But this was a curriculum map, and this one is 170-plus pages. So for any new teacher who is just given the charge to teach AP, which happens not at LP, but I know teachers who walked into their first teaching job and they were given an AP class. This is the curriculum map that teaches them about the course. And then, this document is also very public. They're very transparent on the skills, on past tests, on the whole course framework. So even parents can access this, students can access it, students can access online tests from the last, I think, 30 years. So it's not really a secret. I call this the AP Teacher Playbook. And I won't show you the whole thing, because like I said, it's 170 pages. But they really lay out the nine units. The two English classes, anyway, have nine units. And this is just an at-a-glance, so it's very pretty, it's very colorful. And it starts with short fiction, and then the second unit is poetry, the third unit is a longer piece of fiction or drama, and then it repeats twice. So there's a total of nine. And you can see that with every unit, they add more to it. So they scaffold it. So once students are able to analyze a simile and the effect of it, well, by the next time they get to poetry in Unit 5, now they're writing about it. Yes, yes. That's also one of the great names about teaching AP. There's a lot of freedom. So a teacher doesn't have to follow, like, we probably won't get to all nine units, but it's a great guideline. So you're looking at a snip of my screen. Another aspect of preparing teachers and students for these courses is an online resource called AP Classroom. And students enter their teachers' AP classrooms, kind of like Google Classroom, but this is a little different. Everything is there for teachers to use. And this ruled out, I think, in 2020, no, 2019-2020. And the year we were online, especially when teachers were out for two weeks at a time, and even now, even a week, we have a textbook, but you can only do so much with a textbook and reading. So this has past tests, it has a whole test bank of 900-plus questions. It also has short videos that students, I can assign students to watch, they're about 10 minutes, I can have them take notes on it, or you can even play it for them in class. Sometimes I even just watch the videos and then just pass along the information. So there's a sample of one video. This one is "Write a Thesis That Requires a Defense and May Preview an Argument Structure." This is actually from Language and Composition. Doesn't it sound fun, writing thesis statements? And students kind of have the same look that my screen has. There are the nine units, and they're able to go to any video in any of the units anytime they want. AP also puts video, like, review videos on YouTube, so we'll be in the same spot now that the AP Classroom videos are. But two weeks before the test, they always have like a whole hour-long review. And these videos are all AP teachers across the country. So it's really interesting to watch a teacher say the same kinds of things that I do. I find that intriguing. The students, maybe not so much, they'd rather hear me, but I find these other voices to be interesting. And then this is the student screen. And students actually have this dashboard where they can see what they've completed. I think right now, we're on Unit, I think, 5. So in the bottom part, you can see, I blocked out the student's name, but she has progress checks, both the multiple choice tests and also the essay tests. And the program grades the multiple choice and gives them feedback, but the teacher has to grade the essay. Someday, maybe, the program will grade the essays. But in the green means that they're above, you know, they're achieving what they should. So they can look at their progress, and then I can see their progress that way, too. And then here again is my dashboard. I did white out their names on the left, but this is just one of my classes where I can see where students are maybe having a little bit of difficulty. Something in the yellow may raise a red flag to me. Maybe they're having some trouble with that, or they didn't really put much time into that particular test. But every unit and every test in AP Classroom, it gets harder. So they start off getting some confidence, and then it just kind of builds from there. Okay, so hopefully you have learned a little bit more about the College Board's transparency and clarity and their expectations and the skills that teachers have to know and have to be able to teach to their students in order for them to have success on the exams. And if you have any questions, you can email me, my email is right up there. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and explaining.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is public comment. So is there anyone here in the audience that has a public comment for the board? Or anyone online? So, no public comment. Okay, moving on to finance then. At your station, there's a couple late-arriving bills that would be part of the South Brew Entrepreneurship Bill. So those are there at your station for you to look over if you'd like. So when ready, we need a motion on the board for approval of the bills and payroll for the South Brew Entrepreneurship.
So, second.
Mr. Sarver.
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn. Dr. Lynch.
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes. And for the bills and payroll of LP, Eric Hurry Center?
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn. Mr. Sarver.
Yes.
Dr. Lynch. Mr. Murbaugh.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes. And for the payroll report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mr. Sarver.
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn. Dr. Lynch. Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes. And for the financial records as presented?
Second.
Mr. Sarver.
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn. Dr. Lynch. Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes. And for approval of required board travel expense reimbursements.
Second.
Mrs. Alcorn. Mr. Ferrari.
Yes.
Mr. Sarver. Dr. Lynch.
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh.
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani.
Yes.
Mr. Sparks.
Yes.
Okay, under correspondence, we had a thank you card from the Miranda family for the floral arrangement in memory of Mrs. Heidi Miranda, mother of Mr. Dan Miranda. Also, a thank you card from Dr. Steven Robleski and family for the beautiful flowers and donation to the LP Foundation in memory of his grandmother, Mrs. Edith Gunn. Also, a thank you card from Mrs. Joyce L for the lovely retirement clock from the Board of Education and Staff commemorating her 33 years of service to the district. We also have one TIF reimbursement from the village of North Utica for $2,869.47. Board Committee reports, start out with policy. Carol.
On that Monday, we viewed the second half of the press release. There were several items that we talked about, gun storage education that we have to do, and that's being done in health class. And another one was the school year that we were mandated to clarify graduation requirements. And one of those requirements that they state is trying to mandate, or going to mandate, is every student has to take a foreign language. So they are working through that to see if that will manage in the system. So other than that, there weren't any other things we reviewed and finished at our first reading, and we voted to recommend it to be adopted, but that would be next month.
Next month, so no action.
No, no action.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So they want to require foreign languages to be taken.
Graduation.
A graduation, yet colleges now are not requiring...
If I could add to that, is what I think is an exceptional requirement is everything focused on career pathways, to be able to have kids be, particularly being taking more CTE classes that align to their aspirations, which now jammed up the schedule, you know, to create a complication for how do we really help kids be able to attain that.
And how do we find teachers to teach foreign languages?
Correct, correct.
Time to get all of it.
Yeah.
You know, we much prefer career paths in a foreign language if we want to...
But if foreign languages are a part of your career path, then that's lovely.
Correct.
So it is a question, it is something that the state is working on, trying to mandate it, and...
I rule the world, people.
...is working on having a conversation.
Very interesting, thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's right, right now, there's, yeah, there's a timeline for rollout. So there's a number of groups. I know Dwayne is also part of a group with the EFE Directors around the state, collecting testimonials to be able to help legislators understand the impact that this has and how it's kind of proactive it is. It's not saying anything away from foreign language, because right now, kids can still take a world language to fill one of their elective apartments. That's already there on books. So it's, it's a, it really is a conundrum, and Mrs. Taliani kind of hits it on the head, too. And I know our admin team has talked about the challenge of where are we going to find these people to teach these classes as well.
So it's, this is one of the areas why I'm paying attention to policy and what the state is trying to do, works in our benefit, that we can get ahead of things that are not necessarily productive, but is a thought and idea that one party or one lobby group has, that they push together on the board. So we're watching, we're looking.
Okay, all right, thanks, Carol. Building and grounds.
We waited yesterday, you have the minutes in front of you. We have no action on yet.
Lot of dates.
Buildings falling apart?
I looked at that twice. So, many, this is all updates. So I have the word privately. Any questions, don't hesitate. Nurses office, we have it out for specs. The main building door replacements, we lumped together with the auto shop renovation phase three, that's for the windows, it's out for, we're getting bid recommendations, it'll be out for bidding February. Auditorium stairwell repairs, we're waiting for material to come in. Once it comes in, it shouldn't take long, because they can do that during the day. You don't have to wait for students to be out of the building. The video streaming project is up and running, as evident tonight, we're using it. Herbalsheimer Alumni Room, all the solid surfaces are in, we had to change the color because we couldn't get what we wanted, so we just adjusted. We're waiting for the dedication plaque, tentative dedication will be sometime in March. Our fellow Stadia repairs, we're putting together a prioritization list. This is going to be for, not this season, it'll be the following season, to get all the project done, but we're going to look into anything that needs to be done for safety reasons for this season, make sure that's completed before the season begins. We have to put out a timeline to make sure we have everything done before the season starts. We may miss some practices in Stadia, but we don't want to miss any of those. East GM Interior Roof Drain Repair, amendment has been proven, we have to schedule it. Dolan Building, Greeter Station, the ADOC Committee is meeting on Thursday, the Security ADOC Committee. The elevator replacement in Dolan Building, the amendment has been approved and has to be scheduled. And the abatement on second floor Dolan Building is approved, and we're looking to do it over spring break, just has to be verified. The LP Sports Complex, the update on the Health Life Safety Amendment for the tennis courts and repairs, we're looking at the restoration update and then the review of the quote, the surface track. The track's over 10 years old, and the resurfacing is a full resurface, and it's going to be approximately $291,000. But that's better than having to piece it, because it's still regularly in good shape, so we don't have to, don't have to piece it together, which would be much more money. School Safety Grant, we're approved, that's a matching $50,000 grant, we're using that on the auto shop windows. The plaster repairs and the counseling in disc offices, we are looking at different avenues to address that, because we had to, all the masonry work on the outside is done, all the tuck point and all the masonry is done, and we still have some moisture. So we really don't know where that's coming from, whether it's been in the walls, and it hasn't dried yet, so we're looking at a way, you know, to address that problem. Maybe not full, every room at one time, maybe one room, to see how that works before we put money into all the other rooms. The Dolan Building, door replacement locks, the Dolan Building is one of the only buildings on campus, doesn't have the standardized locks that we have in the main building, main campus. So we're looking to standardize the keying system, and that's going to come out of Tor and that's a 50-60% our cost, because Dolan Building is part of the ACC, that's going to be a shared cost. And a little bid is Poolmaster of $15,076.75. Haas Equipment, managing equipment is here, and that was purchased with the funds from the Kowalski family, Kowalski donation. And the equipment's here, but we have to do some interstructure, some more power in certain parts of the labs, because we don't have enough of that power yet. So when the power gets updated, the machines will be hooked up, and Haas will come in and they will train people and machines. School vehicle signage, do we have that or station?
No, we just shared it with Patty. You have, I think, just your picture.
I can see it on the back of your sheet. I can see it on the back of your sheet.
All right, we'll look at that. And last but not least, IBCC, it's going to be the fiscal agent for the Rural Utilities Service Grant. They put in for that, eighty percent of the school districts and IBCC's district have said that they would be interested in that. That would give us seventy-five hundred dollars to put a lab or a classroom in for distance learning. And that gives it more access to, you know, credits, dual credit courses. And we'll know in the spring whether IBCC was included. So you don't have any questions?
I don't. Thanks, Greg. Okay, finance.
And we also met yesterday, and as you guys saw in the financials, we're fifty percent of the way through the year. And we've received seventy-four point four one percent of revenue and expended fifty-one point oh seven percent with expenditures. So right on target, feel good about that. We do have an action item to allow the district to begin developing the budget, that's an action item for us tonight. We also reviewed the LP Sports Complex resurfacing, we talked about that and looked at the current bid and approximate cost that we think that would be. Another action item is approval for the annual disclosure that we have to provide, and that's in our packet. Then we also discussed the school maintenance grant approval for the fifty thousand dollar mention grant that we received. Also was notified by the administration that our S R three grant application was approved, finalized and done. We also received some preliminary and well, will be receiving some preliminary health insurance rates, that's up and coming. And one of the other items that was kind of an other and discussed at the end is we're in the midst of a ISV grant audit. And that's that's a lot of fun, I'm sure, for everybody to go through that. But the final thing that I kind of did these out of order was the other action item we have is for the Series two thousand twenty-three A and two thousand twenty-three B bonds. And with that, tonight will be final approval of that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Vasidi to talk a little bit about that, too.
Hey, John.
Matt, good evening. As Matt had mentioned, here tonight to discuss the three light resolutions that are on the agenda. First and foremost is the abatement resolution of the working cash fund that essentially depletes the district's working cash fund. However, we are going to replenish that with bond proceeds from the Series two thousand twenty-three A bonds, which will be issued tomorrow afternoon, is my guess. We began selling those, quick update, we began selling those bonds on Tuesday. Yesterday, we were in the market today, we plan on wrapping that up tomorrow. Interest rates have gone down in the past week or two. I'm not lying, you can ask the bank.
Time is everything.
Time is everything. And, you know, going into this week, we preliminarily set, you know, Thursday as a pricing date. Given the short week with the holiday on Monday, there was a chance we postponed it in the next week just in case too many investors are still on their long vacations. But with the rates the way they are and the buyers where they are, we felt we'd just go full speed ahead, which in turn would net you the funds for these for these bonds around February seventh. That's enough money to essentially roll back the year coffers. Additional ordinance or resolution, the third and final one is the work, excuse me, the alternate revenue source bond repaid from TIFF revenues, which is essentially a dovetail from the issuance we did back in twenty thirteen, which kickstarted the athletic complex. So also just touch on real briefly, Dr. Robleski, myself, Lori Whalen, met with Standard and Coors. They're the nationally credit rate, nationally recognized credit rating agency that exists out there in the world. They reaffirmed the district's double A minus credit rating, which is superb. It's not triple A, but, you know, it's very hard to get to that level if not impossible, just given a lot of things out of our control demographically. So we got that confirmed, we'll use that when we're pricing the bonds tomorrow. And in just as a reminder, when we started this process back in September, we're doing all of this without a tax rate increase, right? So that's very just peace of mind and what you've been able to accomplish as a board fiscally, you know, is remarkable. So keep up the good work. I don't think I missed anything, so with that, I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
I don't have any. Sounds good.
I would just add to that, I would echo, first of all, I want to thank John for the support that he provides to the district and guiding us through this process. His 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 assistance is immeasurable. And just to follow up, too, on just where the impact is for our tax rate. Not only are we are we not having any kind of increase, but we are planning to see a three cent reduction in the tax rate as well. So it's really a nice time for the for this for the community and for the for the school district, and thank you for your help with all that.
Glad to be a part of it.
Okay, we'll get to it.
Work, work.
Thanks, Sean. Okay, brought to admin reports.
So this evening, recall last month, we tabled the our annual state of the district, our narrowing the gap presentation. So we have everyone here tonight that is going to be assisting with that presentation. You do have a hard copy of it at your your station, it will follow along. Get ourselves set up here, I'll kick us off to begin. Focus of our of our presentation is to create a maze.
So we have five components that we wish to update the board on. First one is going to be finances, Mrs. Whalen and I are going to speak to that. For academics, Mrs. Cushing, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Menken are going to provide an update on the the state of academics. Mrs. Udis is going to address social emotional. Mr. Shaver and Ms. Lance are going to speak to school safety and Mr. Kuziel is going to to speak to student life. And what we've attempted to do here is to be able to show you the the efforts and the outcomes of the work that we have all been been focused on. And you'll see components into that tie into our strategic plan, but also at really at the core of all this is how are we leveraging our our financial resources? So we want to talk about what's the state of that and then how is that being manifested in the our four key areas of our of our school operations? So to start with, we wanted to kind of give you, this is more of a high level overview of our financial health. But Mrs. Whalen and I really believe that this is going to give you a, I think, probably the most critical insights that you need to to be able to, when you're having a conversation at, you know, at high V, you know, with with someone that has a question, you know, we want to be able to put you in a position to be able to 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 answer that. We want to start first with how are we how are we structured as a district in terms of we get we get revenue from three sources, local, state, federal? What's that balance look like for LP High School because it varies from districts across the state? And we went back to two thousand eighteen, and it's been very consistent like this, really from from the most of our history of our district. But you're going to be able to see that the lion's share where our resources come from, local, that would be our local property taxes as well as our CPPRT revenues and any other local assessments that that we charge. But the lion's share that is coming from our property taxes and our corporate personal property replacement tax. So you can see that eighty-three, well, it averages about between probably about eighty-two percent average of our revenue comes from local sources. You can see the trend, it's kind of ranged from eleven to thirteen down to eleven percent this year of our revenue coming in from state resources. That would be our title grant programs, primarily general state aid, our EBF funding makes up that. And then the smallest portion is federal. But you'll notice, too, that we've seen a spike here over the last couple of years, where it's now eight percent. Well, I think you can probably speculate what that's to, that's our S R funding that we have been receiving. We expect that once we get through this funding period that it will go back down to four percent. The lion's share comes from our local sources. So this is a really great picture of our financial health, going back to two thousand seventeen up to two thousand twenty-one, and these are audited numbers. So this is this is these are real numbers. We have seen an eleven percent increase in our local EAV, our property wealth, going back from two thousand seventeen up to two thousand twenty-one. We're expected to see another increase of between four and five percent of our EAV next year, but we'll we'll know that in the springtime. But I do want to point something out because this is something that is very unique to LP High School, among other districts in our region. It's the impact of TIFFs that we have on our on our school district. And to put it into perspective, there's eight hundred plus school districts in the state of Illinois. Three years ago, LP was the twenty-fifth highest TIFF district on a dollar basis in the entire state of Illinois. Think about that, twenty-fifth highest. And if you look at that column, I think my little pointer is working there, I don't know if you can see it or not, EAV loss to TIFFs. We have between eighty-two to eighty-five million dollars of EAV that gets pulled out of our calculation for our local revenue stream. So that column next to that, I've calculated what is the actual dollar loss that we are not collecting as a result of that being in a TIFF? It's two million dollars, two million dollars every year we're not getting. Now, we have intergovernmental agreements that will bring us a return of some of those receipts, but that's only about averages about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. So when you average that time period out, that's seven million dollars of 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 revenue that we would have gotten. But because it's locked up in a TIFF, now I'm not denigrating TIFFs, but I just want to put in perspective of the impact that it has. And I share that because that also helps reinforce how we utilize the TORT fund to be able to to continue supporting the district. And then you can see the history of the tax rate, which has been very, very steady over that time period. I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Whalen.
So this is really a two-part slide here, you see our financial profile ranking on the left and then EBF funding on the right. So really what you can see there is that profile from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one was all review, which is kind of the second tier category. What you don't see there is from two thousand three to two thousand sixteen where we were in recognition, the top category, which we're back into now. The dip happened because one of the components in that financial profile is long-term debt and what debt margin you have available. And if you recall, two thousand sixteen seventeen was when we took on the renovation bonds, and so that's what brought that down. But those five years of payments, of principal payments of about four million dollars a year then brought us back into financial recognition for two thousand twenty-two. The left-hand side really kind of, or the right-hand side then really kind of backs up what Dr. Robleski was speaking about of our state funding. And this is the new basis of how how we get the state funding and it's it's based on the tiers. So the lower the tier, so tier one is where districts receive the most additional financial aid every year. If you're a tier four district, it's it's you get new money, but it's it's literally like three thousand dollars or a couple hundred dollars, it's very minimal. The beauty of EBF funding is that every year you you don't see less than you saw the year before. So it just keeps, for us, it just keeps increasing with the new money. So our base was set in two thousand seventeen and then you see in two thousand eighteen, we had about a hundred and sixty thousand in new revenue. So that's added in, that becomes the new base then for two thousand nineteen, and it just keeps growing. The N A that you see under new money in two thousand twenty-one, that was obviously the COVID year, and we were just kept flat. Everyone was kept flat, there was no new money for that year. A couple other pieces to that, as you can see, we're now in tier two. As our adequacy percentage increases, and when we talk about adequacy, that's really our ability to fund the district locally. And so we're ranked now where we're funding it at a seventy-five percent level. That is an extremely oversimplified explanation of the calculation because there are so many pieces that are involved in making that calculation. But as you can see, as our adequacy level will increase, or yeah, as our adequacy level increases, we also go up in tiers. So we will be the recipient as we move, especially into tier three and tier four, we'll be getting less of that new money. Our base will always continue to increase by that new money and we won't go backwards, but we won't be getting, we won't be seeing like the three hundred and sixty-nine thousand that we saw in two thousand twenty. So then this is a this is a really exciting piece of the cash on hand because I think it it really captures all of the progress that we've made in the last couple of years and really getting to that total number where we're at as we begin twenty, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three of close to ten million dollars in our operating funds. I'm just going to point out a couple of things, in two thousand nineteen in the working cash column, you saw an influx there. We grew to two point seven million. That was the last time that we have issued bonds for working cash. And we've really been able to continue to fund the district. And you can see it dipped down a little bit for some projects, but really it's continued to grow. And then in two thousand twenty-one, or between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, in the O and M fund, you can see it went from two point one to one point five. But we were utilizing that fund balance in order to finish up some of the larger projects that we had. And so that nearly ten million dollar balance that we started this year with is really the effects of increased EAV, increased evidence-based funding and increased corporate personal property tax or CPPRT. So we do it, the health of the district is very good financially as we continue to move forward in the years. So as she said, the the health of the district is looking good financially. I think our academic side is is also starting to to see an upturn here. We presented this obviously in December, so historically, over the years, I've collected the data on December first to present to to the board for you to look at that grades for for students. And you can see there that the the number has improved from from last year's time on December first to this year's time of our percentage of students. As a staff, we've we've made it a goal for for many years to keep that percentage below ten percent. So you can see that this year we're we're at eight point five three percent as December, as of December first we were. And that was also not only below that target mark, but it was also an improvement from the the year before. So I think that we're seeing some some definite improvements there. The next slide here, this is our first semester data, which definitely looks different than the December first data. The reason for that shift there, and any of you that have been in the the role of education here in the classroom, you know, the the mass rush to turn in late work and the impact that finals can have and all of those kinds of things. So that number definitely changes, and I'm happy to say that because of the delay in our report here, I'm actually able to share that information with you. And that last column there, for those of you that like to keep track of data like I do, you can change that from eight point five three to seven point three three. So our chart really has improved significantly there from last year and obviously from, you know, the the previous there. So I can see some of you aren't as interested in that number as I am, but that's great news for all of us here. As far as our other piece of data, there is focus so much on that failure rate all the time, but I think it's really important, too, to to share that success side as well. Our students are certainly scoring really well. Those that that are are working hard are maintaining grades that are great. I mean, we have over forty percent of the grades that are earned are are sitting in the the A mark there, so that that is certainly something to be proud of. The other slides that I had to share with you were something that I had shared earlier in the year with you at a a previous board meeting.
But I just wanted to reiterate the importance of this information that we use throughout the school year to, to make decisions and just to point out those, those classes there in the green. We can see that growth again. To point out there, the class of twenty-five has, has gone there from, you know, a total there of twenty-seven percent from one year up to the next year of that thirty-three percent when you add those two together. So the same thing happened in the twenty-four there. So it, it grew when you look at that. And that's something that, that we use as data to, to show some growth there. That was for reading, math. The growth maybe wasn't quite so significant, but we did see some growth again with that class of two thousand twenty-five, which is also significant there. I won't spend more time on that, even though there's obviously a lot of information in those, those benchmarking, but I know I've covered those previously. So with that, I will pass it on to Mr. Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. While Mrs. Cushing talked much more broadly across all classes with a lot of the academics, I'm going to focus on just a couple of subgroups. The first group being our advanced placement courses and students. And so on this particular slide, the key takeaways that I'd like you to, to focus on is, first of all, let's look at that yellow box, the projected two thousand twenty-three. So the exams and students that, that we are looking at for this year. One thing I want to key in on is the hundred and seventy-plus students is really getting back closer to our last quote-unquote "normal" school year prior to COVID, which was two thousand nineteen. So the, the exams that were given in two thousand nineteen would have been the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. And notice, we were at about a hundred and eighty students there. So our student numbers have continued, are, are rebounding as far as the number of students who are taking exams, AP exams. The number of exams, you can see, I'm, I'm very proud to say that the projection is about fifty greater than what we did this past year, two thousand twenty-two. So we're, we're projecting around three hundred and twenty exams will be taken, AP exams. And that covers twenty different subject areas. I know Mrs. Hanekar Ummal talked about sixteen. That's the number of courses that we offer here at the school, taught at the school. But the number of exams taken, the contents, is actually twenty. So for example, we're actually going to give an AP physics exam to some students. Even though we teach physics, we don't teach AP physics. And so the number of courses that our students are taking exams in is back to pre-COVID numbers. So that's our projected numbers. But the other thing in the, in the green box that I want to call out is the, the scoring for our students. And this really calls out the, the hard work that our teachers and our students are putting in in the classroom. Notice from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, our percentage of students who scored a three or better went from fifty-two percent to sixty-nine percent. What that means really, those students who score a three or better, generally speaking, depending on the school, the college, those are students who are earning college credit. So sixty-nine percent of a hundred and thirty-seven is roughly ninety-five of our students earned college credit. The average score going from a two-point-five to a two-point-nine. So that's showing impeccable work done in our classrooms there. So the second slide that I have is just kind of looking at the, the demographics of AP students. The green boxes kind of call out the positives. First of all, in our gender gap, we're seeing more males involved this year. We try to get a little bit closer to the LPAHS numbers. And so you can see our male numbers and female, female numbers represent a little bit closer to that fifty-fifty match for LP. And then our racial, the racial breakdown you can see is, is much more in line with our demographics as a full school, from AP to our full school. The one area of challenge right now is getting more and more of our lower-income students involved with AP exams. And, and that, that's a, a challenge that we take each and every year because as Mrs. Hanekar Ummal pointed out, the, the students are paying for the exams. And so that, that is a, a financial cost to the student and to the family. And so that's one area where we have challenge in, and you can see those numbers. LPA numbers of, of lower income is about forty-two percent, but we only have about twenty percent-ish involved in AP, the AP exams. And then the last one, the other subgroup that I want to talk about is our juniors who take the PSAT and MSQT. And on this particular chart, the thing I want to, to call out is the difference between LP, the mean score of LP and the mean score of the state. You'll notice that back in the four-year lookback that I did in the two thousand nineteen test situation there, we scored a, a mean score of ten-sixty. And this year we were at ten-thirty-three, which is our second highest in those, that four-year period. But the bigger thing is, is that our, our gap is greater as far as we've separated from the state a little bit. So the state has come down and we have gone up as far as that gap is concerned. Our numbers went down as far as the number of students taking the exam this year. But this just gives you an idea that, again, it shows some, some evidence that our teachers and our students are really working very hard in the classroom and narrowing the gap as far as the academics are concerned. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Minkin.
Okay, so as we go through the data, you'll, you're going to notice an elephant in the room, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, whatever you want to call it. But when we start things off at the Career Center because of the nature of what we're doing and, and how we do it there, I always start the year with a speech to the kids and then ask them three things. We just ask you, get up, dress up, and show up. And we'll kind of take care of the rest. So if you look at the data, I started off with an absence comparison. And you'll notice just drastically that since we're comparing first semester data, when we went through the experience of being remote, just things shot through the roof. So when you look through there, by and large, and anecdotally with doing interviews with the kids, it just, that's not what we wanted. That, that's exactly not what the Career Center was supposed to be. We, we got to be here to do things. And, and that's very evident in the data you see up there in terms of the average number of absences, which was astronomical during that semester, almost close to twenty absences. Along with, when you look at it broken down by less than five and, and the other groups, it just, in the fifteen or greater absences, it just, again, skyrockets during that year. The rest of them do a pretty decent job of moderating themselves in other years, especially as we get back to normal. So then, when you look at the grade comparisons again, matching that up with, with the attendance and not being here and things like that, when you look at the grade distribution, it's just, to me, a huge disgrace of what, what happened with the fifty-two failures during that particular semester. That never happens at the Career Center. Generally, when they're here, they're working this year, the same thing. We don't have the failures that come up because the kids are doing hands-on things that they're, because they want to. Generally, we're, we're congregated towards the left end of the As and Bs, but you see those numbers explode again during that semester. So it doesn't need to be said, all of us in education know the struggles we went through during that time. But especially at a place like the Career Center, it just was totally glaring. And, and so we look at that, I don't want to be a, a total downer, but, but we know that that's what happened. And whatever happens going forward, we, for the Career Center, hopefully collectively, all of education goes, okay, we got to figure out a way if something like this happens again to get through it because that year is evidently bad. But there were some good things that came out of it. And so if you look at the end, because of what that forced us into in changing things, we were able at the Career Center to start incorporating, and the teachers are continuing that to this day, of doing some more things that, that people find very valuable and industry finds valuable of getting those certifications. Particularly, again, it's just a small start, but getting an OSHA certification, which is recognized universally across the United States when that's presented to someone, they know what that means and what the value that is with it, along with the other credentials that come from, whether it's computer repair and programming or welding, or the ECE in childcare. Those are being put to use by students. One last anecdotal story before I turn it over to April. Got a call this year for a semester from a kid during that time. Hey, I need my OSHA certification. I never downloaded it. Can you get it for me? So we have a great relationship with the company that works with us. They were able to go back and get it for him, but he got into his unis, Union Apprenticeship Program because he was able to provide them proof that he had completed that. And so we, we know that, again, the kids are valuing these, and those are things that were positive from this. But realistically, with the other data compared when we look at it, I'm not really stating anything new. It was, we need to be in our classrooms, doing our work with our hands, and, and that's where we do best with this school. So I don't know if there's any questions, but I, it's pretty evident when I looked at the data, what happened with us. April?
Good evening. So socially-emotional, I think that's a word everybody hears everywhere, in any environment you're in, whether it's social media or on TV academically. So our socially-emotional, how's it been going? Okay, I won't read you all these numbers. Our SEL and EBC. SEL, Social Emotional Learning, and EBC is Emotional Behavioral Control. And that's, EBC is two areas, it's internal and external. And I knew coming out of COVID that this wasn't going to be like, okay, we're going to get back in here and everybody's going to be fine. In my head, I would say, I would say we, I always thought this is going to take us a decade. Hopefully it won't, but we have made improvements, slow and steady. I'm happy to report that we're not making big jumps, but it's not going down. So the state of our students, they are getting the help. They are recognizing that they need the assistance. So with this data, when I did this presentation, we had this in December, the program that we use, actually, it just switched to a, a little different format. So I was able to extrapolate some different data as well. And so for socially-emotional learning, they want us at like eighty percent would be your goal. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, our, our goal would have been eighty percent, and we're at seventy-seven point sixty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, eighty percent would have been the goal. We're at seventy-eight point twenty-one. So yes, we have gone up. And the EBC, the actual, the, I'm sorry, the goal would be eighty-five percent. Twenty-one, twenty-two, internal was eighty point fifty-one, external is eighty-two point eighteen. And then this present year, twenty-two, twenty-three, the internal is eighty-two point seven-five, and the external is eighty-two point ninety-eight. So in every case here, as you can see on that too, we've, we tested sixty fewer. That could be with non-consents, absenteeism, whatever, what, many different reasons for that. But we are seeing a, a change in that. Okay, so where are we at now? Well, with the programs we have, once they get to, and they take the screener, and we actually are having the screener, and we're, it's the MTSS Behavioral Screener. We don't want to call it the SEL screener. And we are going to be taking that again this Friday. And it's going to be across all the grade levels. And then they go into, we have many different variations on how they can be put into certain groups. And a lot of it obviously is our screener, but then we also have different areas. It would be counselor referral, teacher referral, discipline referral, if it seems. So there's a lot of different components that we look at to get into certain groups. And the groups that we had going last year, I'm not, well, it was last year. Last semester was stress group, Y, Y-try group, and self-esteem groups. And I think this is important to point out. The teacher, the instructor that was with them, the counselor, had them add a few quotes into, or she asked them, what did you guys think about these groups? So the stress group said, I learned many coping mechanisms and ways to deal with stressful situations. It was very helpful, made me realize that even the simplest things such as listening to music or driving can help you in a stress, stressful situation. Now, the Y-try group is exactly the title in what you would think it would be like, why try? Why should I even be doing anything? I learned how to be more positive and not care what others say or do. I learned that I can relate to others about things. And the self-esteem, which we all know what that is, I learned not to be so hard on myself. I learned to accept myself more. I think those two are very powerful statements in that. And so where are we at now? We, we're still seeing students that have anxiety, depression. I would say that would be our number one. When Student Support Services, Mrs. Carney came in two months ago, three months ago. We are seeing a lot of sexual abuse going on this year compared to other years outside, outside of school. Pure conflicts, suicidal ideations, and self-harm. As far as the counseling department, in the fall, they reported four-hundred-and-eighty, fall of two thousand twenty-one, and this year at the same time, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven. So again, we want that number to go down because that would have been the ones that were coming in for crisis situations. And we have many resources here. We have our social workers, our social emotional interventionist, our school counselors, our school psychologists. And then also, we always provide outside resources. And I won't read those through, you guys can see that. But every day is a new day. And if you don't have the students' mental health and mental well-being, then you're not going to be having the academics in line either. Because once they shut down with that, then they're pretty much done for the day. So I think it's a, a good balancing act too.
I'm going to be moving into school safety, talking about referrals. A lot of the social-emotional aspects that Ms. Udis was talking about does have to do a lot with the referrals that we do have on occasion that come into our office. During the three-year trends that we have up here during the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, that was the year of the COVID-type situation, you'll see our numbers were very low during that time. They jumped up quite a bit to the twenty-one, twenty-two, different school year. That is, the semester broken down, the first semester there, because I compared that with the twenty-two, twenty-three semester. As you can see so far, from the twenty-one, twenty-two semester to the twenty-two, twenty-three year, numbers have dropped significantly. We still have a high rate with attendance issues that we deal with. As far as referrals are coming in, the majority of the referrals that we have deal with attendance-type situations as in cutting first-period class, tardy-to-school, truancies, cutting classes, skipping classes, so forth, and different things. Those are the majority of the referrals that we do have coming in. And you can see though that there has been a significant drop since we went back to a normal school year of twenty-one, twenty-two to the twenty-two, twenty-three so far in this school year. The good thing is, you know, we have security out there roaming the halls consistently. Dean of Students, Ms. Lance, is, is constantly out there supervising. I'm constantly out there. We have administration out there making sure kids are doing what they're supposed to, and it's, and it's been helping quite a bit. The second slide here, I'm some positives, things that are going on. In the first semester since two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, and actually, you know, I think I actually put the wrong years on that. I will just say that, it should be twenty-two to twenty, twenty-three. We had a five-hundred, or five-hundred-and-twenty referral drop. As I was talking about, the referrals have gone down. We had fifteen-hundred-and-thirty-three, and then we dropped down to one-thousand-and-thirteen in the first quarter. Truancy referrals have decreased, have decreased by a hundred and ninety-two percent within that time span. Currently, another positive thing, and that's not the exact total as of right now, but during that time, we're at three-twenty-five. If I remember right, three, we're close to three-fifty now. Yeah, close, over three-fifty currently. Our goal is to hit a thousand each school year. And we're pushing that with the teachers trying to get more positive referrals, seeing the good things that the students are doing in the classes. Not always just the negative things, but we want to see the positive things that we're doing. And when we get those positive referrals, we always give, you know, accolades to them, great job. We usually give them a prize or different, different item from the different stores and stuff in the area that have donated to us. And that comes from Culvers, that comes from Hy-Vee, that comes from Buffalo Wild Wings, that give different certificates and stuff to, to present to the kids. The last slide I have here, some of the enhancements that we're doing this year. We are hiring more security members, and you'll see that later in the, the notes of the board minutes. A few more gentlemen that we're going to be hopefully hiring for next, next week, starting on Monday. That brings my staff up to nine security staff, which is good because now we can cover each hallway, each floor, all day long. And we're popping in and out of bathrooms, making sure things are going smoothly, making sure that students are getting where they're supposed to be. We did start talking with Mrs. Nicole Kowalczek, the SEL Interventionist. We're going to start a little bit different program. I know they've worked in the previous years with the SEL Interventionist with talking about with the suspension students and having meetings with them. We're switching it up a little bit more, I'm gonna isolate more on the ones that are consistently getting suspended. And we're gonna have three to five meetings that she's gonna be having during her sessions with restorative justice practices to work with those students, to try to motivate them to switch gears and to do better things, instead of getting in trouble all the, all the time. The last thing there, the east gym doors are locked all day long now. Okay, that was an issue that we came into before. Those doors are consistently locked, and we're making sure that the security is there. Once the two gentlemen start next week, I am shifting another security member to the east gym area, and he's gonna be watching the transition times when that door opens up, to make sure we just have students flowing into the east gym. Any questions you might have? All right, I'm gonna be moving it on to Mr. Kaziel.
All right, I'm gonna present a little bit of data on our student life, mostly our athletics and our activities here. One of the things I can say that I'm most proud of, looking at just our numbers for our fall and winter season, for those students that are registered for our athletics, we are getting close to those pre-COVID numbers. We're at four hundred and twenty-five student athletes so far for those first two seasons. If you look prior to that, we're like in the four-sixties. Last year was a big jump, returning back from up to four ninety-five. But also keep in mind, those numbers are for the full school year. So that's all three seasons, we're at four hundred and twenty-five so far right now, with just two seasons, and we still have the whole spring season left to go. So I think that we will have a great possibility of actually having larger number of students being involved in our athletics through our school year. Just a quick breakdown, we have a hundred and forty-four freshmen currently in sports. Again, this taking the two seasons into this year, not all three, because we haven't gotten to the last one yet. Hundred and eighteen for sophomores, ninety-two for juniors, seventy-one for seniors. I think this bodes very well for our athletic programs going forward. Getting those students in, getting them as younger underclassmen, keeping them, getting them involved only bodes well for them throughout their whole school process. Being involved in school has shown great things for athletics and then as, as well as for academics. Broke it down one step farther into our participation, based on the number of males and females that we have. Males are slightly increased over females. I do believe a large portion of that though has to do with our football team for the fall season. Just such a large number on those three teams kinda skewed that data a little. But we are having a large number, both males and females, coming out for our sports, which again, bodes well for everybody all the way through. Broke it down by our students' ethnicity. Mostly, I could say on this, this mostly falls quite in line with our breakdown of our school. If you look at the percentages of the school breakdown overall, our sports and our athletics programs are pretty much following that same data all the way through. And then the one that I am most proud of, of that we're looking into, kind of been talked about with our academics already, is the overall academic data of our students. So we have the academic voucher system here for those students that might be in a little bit of academic crisis. As you might wanna say, they're still eligible, most of them, to still participate, but we're trying to avoid them from getting to that ineligibility rate. So for our fall season, so I was able to have the total number provided to you, we had three hundred and sixty total students in fall sports. Of that, sixty individual students were assigned those academic vouchers throughout that time, so roughly sixteen percent. As you can see, if you compare that from the year before, just the percentage-wise, our students are actually, our student athletes are actually performing at a higher academic standard than they were just the year before. Of all that, seventy-five percent of those students were then removed from vouchers. So they received a voucher one week, their grades weren't quite all the way up to our par, our standards, and they were able to find a way to remove themselves from those vouchers, not staying on them week after week throughout the whole season. We did have seventeen students that were ineligible, about the same percentage overall. But again, a smaller number of total students all the way through. And again, then eighty-eight percent of those students found a way to become eligible again and find themselves back on the team, meeting the school standards and IHSA standards to be able to compete in their athletic activities again. So overall, again, the student-athlete part really hitting home with them, they're students first, and that's still being athletes. And then my last slide, something brand new, something we haven't tracked yet, but again, I think is feel, is just as important as the athletic side, is our activities participation. So on the bottom, there are a lot of different activities that we offer all the way through. But just as you saw in athletics, we have a lot of students that participate and do other things in our school other than just being on a sports team. So we have four hundred and twenty-nine students that are currently signed up, and this is looking at just activities that are offered in just our first semester, that we have four hundred and twenty-nine students that are involved in some other way in our school, not just through our athletic program, but doing something else to help enhance our community here at LP. And I get to end it with any questions.
What I want to include in the activities is that it's, it gives a much better picture of student involvement in the school.
We talk about finding something for every kid here in the building. Combine those two numbers, I mean, you're looking at what, about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred of our twelve hundred kids or so that are, are involved in something.
Are those all our clones?
No, those are only the ones that are offered for a semester.
Okay.
So we, there are, there are more, but they're, we couldn't get you a number because they're just not in session.
So Ingrid could give us better data through the semester by pushing this to January and not having to do December. Right, Ingrid? Never mind, yes! Just think that's so nice to have a shorter December meeting for them. Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions?
No, it's a good presentation, good, a lot of good information.
Thanks everyone, nice job.
I get the sense that the students are valuing school more with the lack of it the last two years. Maybe, you know, they, wow, this was more important than I thought it was, maybe I can be engaged. The number looks like that could be.
I just think being back in person and having, what truly, we've often talked about normalcy. And, and it's, it feels normal, you know, and I, and I think that there is that appreciation, you know, for that.
Okay.
I do not have anything else in, in my report, other than what was written, unless you have questions.
This is report Ingrid.
I just have probably a few other things to quickly let you know about. We had our institute day on the, the fourth of January. Staff got ready for second semester, obviously. But we also did another little activity where they, they looked at some data at their final exams. And there was a lot of observations, I guess, they made, and some good outcomes that they came up with in terms of just making some adjustments and being able to come up with some ideas about ways that they can improve their, their instruction moving forward. And I was very pleased with, with everything that the teachers did on that, so I wanted to publicly give them some, some kudos for that analysis that they did. Some other things that we're working on, just so that you're aware. I know that Mrs. Udis mentioned that we're gonna do our MTSS behavior screener the end of this week. Teachers are also implementing the RTI, the benchmarking academic side. So we'll have fresh data for all of the, the numbers that I had shared with you as well. And then we also have some testing for the access testing that will begin, that remember is for all of our EL students. Those numbers have, have risen over the years, and we have about ninety-some students that will need to be taking tests. So that testing will take place over the course of about four days, and that will begin in early February. As far as any other updates, the last thing is just to let you know that we will be having Catholic, eighth grade Catholic schools' shadow day, which had to take a, a break due to COVID, but I'm really happy to say that we're able to have that return, and that will happen next Thursday on the twenty-sixth. Any other questions for me? Okay, thanks.
All right, I just wanna give a quick update on some of our athletics and some highlights from the report that I had turned in. This year, we've always hosted a midwinter classic, it's always been just freshmen. This year, we hosted a round robin varsity tournament to go along with that, and I'm proud to say that our Cavaliers took first place in that. Round robin on the varsity side, so it was a good introduction to starting that tournament up for us, and looks to continue that for next year. Our boys bowling team, last week, won the I-8 Bowling Conference Tournament. So that portion of it, they finished first overall, our, our boys, we're very proud of them for that. And to continue on with bowling, last Saturday was actually the regionals, we hosted it right here. Our team finished fourth overall in the regional, which actually qualified the whole team to go to sectionals. And out of eighty-two bowlers, Chance Hank, our very own, was the entire, led the entire regional, was the high scorer for the entire regional. So very proud for his accomplishments there, helping lead that team, and then the rest of them too, for stepping up, getting them all to sectionals this upcoming Saturday. Proud to say that last Saturday, also, on the same day as the regional, we had the Hall of Honor ceremony. We were able to induct and honor eight individuals and two teams into our Hall of Honor. We had a great turnout, we had over a hundred people come in to, part of, be part of the inductees, their families and guests, to really honor those individuals and those teams, their accomplishments and things they have done here at LP. So it was a great turnout, a great day for them. One last one that I'll have is our activities, like to point out our band and choir. We've had nine students selected to attend the Illinois Music Education Association All-State Festival. Two are in band, one is in jazz, one in orchestra, and five in choir. This is the equivalent of the state meet for those music festivals. They will actually be performing in part of that starting next Thursday. Any questions? Thank you.
So we wanted to start off by commending LP student Olivia Shetterly as our student of the month for this month. She, at the Career Center, is what we call a double-dipper. She was nominated by her entrepreneurship teacher, but she's also an outstanding student in Mr. Dawson's residential wiring class, so my hopes are that we've got another Elon Musk in the making there, or something of that nature. But she, just a phenomenal kid, excelling in both of those things, even though it was nominated by one teacher, the other teacher's like, yeah, absolutely. If I was nominating, it'd be her as well, too, so, a great kid. We also, it didn't make it into my report to you, but in the past week, the Career Center received two very nice donations. The first one, of course, comes with a little bit of sadness, the Mr. Don Ludzinski, who was a local area, very deeply involved in the union carpentry, passed away, and his family named the Career Center as one of the beneficiaries if people wanted to make a donation. So Mr. Tim Ludzinski came yesterday, and in their graciousness, they made a very nice donation to Mr. Burr's Building Trades class to support that. The City of Peru also, for the fire signs program, donated a very good number of nice SCBA equipment for the kids to continue with that part. That's very expensive equipment, it's still in very good shape, and so we're very appreciative of them supporting us with that as well. As you saw in your report, you also see that as we go into second semester, we start the year slightly less than three hundred kids. Percentage-wise, that's a, a smaller drop than we usually get at the semester turn, so that was a nice little bit of news. But we're right close to, I think it was two ninety-four, I put in the report. Chris counted again the other day, with some changes like two ninety-six now, so we're a little bit below three hundred. And then lastly, looking forward to some very nice relationships that are being reborn after the COVID thing this Friday. Me and Dr. Robleski and Mr. Burr will be meeting with Habitat as they get ready for a build over here in Peru to get us fully involved with the kids doing a full house build, and so very excited about that. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Director of Communication, Matt, lying back here.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So it's probably the biggest piece and really the only thing probably to take our attention, is as Mr. Sarver said, the streaming system is up and for the most part running. You can see a lot of the new equipment, it's right here, but you don't see there's also wiring running all throughout the building and backboard data networks. Probably one issue today is just a little data issue with our internet network. So for tonight, we're just recording, we'll have to upload the video tomorrow. I'll work with Mrs. Williams and her team to get that fixed, but we do know that the system's working. We did livestream the Hall of Honor ceremonies in the auditorium over the weekend, that went really well. What's really nice about the new system, aside from being a little easier to get around the building than my old milk crates and bags, is we can stream to multiple sources at the same time. So for Saturday, we're able to go to Facebook, YouTube, and record it internally. And theoretically, we could probably do a little bit more than that, but that's really all, our viewers are gonna be looking anyway. So yeah, so a few more training, and we're still waiting on some new, or some additional audio equipment to come in, which is why we're kinda at a piecemeal it with some things from around the building for tonight. So hopefully, within the next month, the last, again, like a lot of things, just on backorder, technology-wise, we'll have all of that in and really be able to give the, the final checks on the punch list and sign off on completing projects. That's it, unless you have any questions?
We actually called one, and there was some sound.
Through the entire thing, or?
The, I gave up after.
Was it early during the choir session? Yeah, okay, that was just, I only have one mic for the choir, one stage mic, and I don't think the kids were quite, in the room, you could hear it. So that's really comes down to, I think, some learning as we go in terms of how we can position mics and where we have to put people, that sort of thing. If we're able to get them on the stage, but just with the setup of that event, we kinda have to, we had to kinda see how it was gonna work, but it wasn't, that's, was kind of our one pickup for that one, so. Yeah, it'll definitely be a learning process as we go on trying to find who and how to, how to best make it work, given some of the, some of our setups and things like that. But it's nice to do, we are set up though to go in the auditorium here and in select gym. So for any of our big major events, all of our kind of top locations inside the building are covered.
Great. Okay, thanks, Matt.
Okay, let's go into new business then. So I would need a motion on the board then, for approval of the resolution of the Board of Education, in South Purdue County High School District Number One Twenty, LaSalle and Bureau Counties, Illinois, to abate the working cash fund of said district.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed eleven million dollars of general obligation school bonds, Series Twenty Twenty-three A, and for the levy of a direct annual taxes sufficient to pay the principal and interest on such bonds.
So moved.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver? Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch? Mr. Murbaugh? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of a resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed two and a half million dollars of general obligation school bonds, alternate revenue source, Series Twenty Twenty-three B, for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital projects within the district and paying the costs related thereto as amended.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of a resolution to authorize the superintendent to prepare the fiscal year twenty-four district budget.
Second.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the two thousand twenty-two annual disclosure report.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. No action for item ten point six. Ten point seven, I would need a motion on the board for approval of the appointments as presented.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch? Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of- And for approval of the maternity slash FMLA leave request as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Sarver? Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch? Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of the paternity slash FMLA leave as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval, permission for the on-campus fundraiser requests. You'll see two of those there for the Girl Scouts, numbers A and B, as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval for a permission for the ACC Automotive Program to host the annual car show at the Pope Building on September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And for approval of permission for the music department's overnight trip to Peoria to participate in the Illinois Music Education Association All-State Festival from January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, to January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Expenses will be funded by the district activities travel account.
Second.
Dr. Lynch? Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Sarver? Mrs. Alcorn? Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. And I would need a motion on the board to adjourn to executive clause session for appointment, employment compensation, discipline, and or complaint against an employee, performance, and or dismissal of specific employees, B, student discipline, and C, imminent pending litigation with open session, possible actual items to follow.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sarver?
Yes.
Mr. Murbaugh?
Yes.
Mrs. Alcorn? Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mrs. Taliani?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrari?
Yes.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes. Thanks, everyone, have a good night.
Hey, Mike.